I'll call the Dixon County Commission to order the April 7, 2016 meeting. Would you please stand for the flag, Selig?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do have two additions to our agenda today. The first one is to consider appointing Jane Foltz as the Dixon County Representative to the Flint Hills Regional Transit Board. And the second one is to review and consider resolution authorizing sale of bonds for EMS debt. And are there any other additions? If not, I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda are the minutes of the March 31 work session and regular meeting. Payroll, $261,208.55. Fund expenditures, $387, $939.96. Add a tax of $1,241.94. Abatements, $1,930.44.
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Craig, do you want to start?
After the meeting last Thursday, I went to Beloit, North Central Regional Planning Commission. It was a rather long meeting. We didn't get out of there until 10 after 5, 10 after 5 last week. We went through a self-evaluation process that's going to continue into May. I'll be going to Salina with the group, the 28th for our annual tour of the projects at North Central Regional Planning Commission. And I was in Washington yesterday for the, what's the acronym, how you pronounce it?
North Central Kansas Association.
Yeah, I don't know what the acronym is for that.
N-C-K-C-E-N-C-O or something.
Yeah. I was there yesterday in Washington. That's all.
Len?
The only thing I had, and just what Craig has mentioned, the meeting there at Washington, Kansas, it involves 16 counties, so it gives us opportunity to visit with some of the other county commissioners, but also the vendors sponsored a meal, so it gave us a chance to kind of touch base with some of the people that we see throughout the year. And we've kind of received an update more on a state level on some of the expectations we may have for funding, but also some highway projects. And so, that's all I've got.
I did make a trip. Rural Life had invited some of their past members to go with them on a trip down to Topeka, and that was on last Friday. And one of our tour stops was at the Capitol Building. Like I say, all the renovations work is done now. It's, like I say, it's a building that all of us should really be proud of. They say there's, they do get a lot of people that are interested in the construction of that building and how it's stood up through the years. So, we did get to talk to John Barker, our representative, and anyway, explain some of the things, the procedures that they have there in the House of Representatives. So, it was a very good trip. Also, I was up in Washington with the highway meeting yesterday also, and I thought that was a very, very good meeting also. Presentations, petitions, proclamations, and other public comments. And we have with us some ladies that read this proclamation. If you want to come up and introduce yourself and...
Hello, my name's Amanda Olivier. I'm the campus advocate with D-Back. And so, I'm here to read the 2016 Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in Dickinson County. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, youth aged 12 to 17 are 2.5 times more likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. Whereas, college students face high rates of sexual violence on and near campuses, has one, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. Whereas, we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful and perpetrating attitudes and actions. Whereas, with leadership and dedication, prevention is possible. It is time for all of us to become aware and educated and take action as a community to create a safer environment for all members of Dickinson County. Whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with Dickinson County officials to support the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private endeavors to prevent sexual violence.
You want to introduce?
This is Megan. She's the new sexual assault advocate. So, she, I was the sexual assault advocate, and she took over in January.
Okay. So, I'll finish the proclamation declaring April 2016 as Sexual Awareness, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Therefore, Dixon County hereby proclaims the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and pledged to join advocates and communities across the country to play an active role to prevent sexual violence. And I move that we approve this proclamation. It is 040716.
No, you don't need a number on it.
Okay, we don't need none.
No.
Okay.
I'll second.
Well, second, you put it both down.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Well, we do thank you for coming in and... Did you want to get a picture of Kathy? Let us sign. Oh, yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
With the motion in two seconds, it was probably pretty obvious.
So, is there a method where people call you in Salina, or do you work with the sheriff and police or agencies as far as?
Call the above.
Okay.
I'll get out of Fisher.
Yeah. Craig.
We've got two copies here, so when we get them all signed, we'll give you one copy.
Okay.
And then, are you a two-person agency, or do you have a group?
We actually have 20 employees. We're a network for agency. We just received a large Boca grant in October, and so, we were able to add several positions, including my new position. I'm at Kansas Wesleyan at K-State Polytechnic. I split my time between the two campuses and advocate. And we have a court advocate now that's at the courthouse all day for PFAs, PFSs. So, several new positions that were...
And then, is it a group of counties you cover, or?
10 counties. So, Dickinson, Saline, Ellsworth, all the way to the Nebraska border.
Okay. Hmm, a big area.
Big area, yeah. We have a satellite office in Concordia, so they help with a lot of the more rural areas. And then, our office covers more Dickinson, Ellsworth, and Saline counties, so. Thanks so much.
Well, thank you for coming in. We do have another proclamation.
Thank you.
This proclamation is celebrating 48 years of fair housing in County of Dixon. Whereas, the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which Title VII declared that the law of the land would not guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas, the County of Dixon is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, many real companies and associations support fair housing laws. And whereas, the fair housing groups and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proved upon investigation to be violations of the fair housing law. And whereas, equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in our county that can and should be achieved. I, Laverne Myers, Commissioner of Dixon County, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month and express the hope that this year's observation will promote fair housing practices throughout the county dated this 7th day of April 2016. So, I move that we approve this proclamation for fair housing.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Probably, okay, we do right hand this time.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion.
He knows we're listening, so that's kind of a test there.
Keep your... So, I guess the other added ones we will do after, in, on the new business resolutions.
His report.
Yeah. So, go ahead, Brad, give your report.
As I notified you, the Goldberg Group representatives, Larry and I believe Kevin Ross will be here Monday morning. They would like to, they'll be here all day Monday, actually, but they'd like to start with you guys and talk Monday morning, if that works for you, and spend just a little bit of time talking to you to kind of get their needs assessment kicked off. We are currently scheduling the other department's representatives to meet with them throughout the day, so they'll be here at least Monday. He said, see how it goes. It could be here Tuesday. We may come back another day to talk, to try and get through everybody, so that they'll kind of kick off our needs assessment. So, just a reminder, Tuesday evening, we have the Clay County Association of Resilience sharing the unit at the Clay Center.
Is it 6:00 or 6:30?
6:30.
Okay. I thought it was 6:00. I put my phone wrong.
I will double check that. That's what I had on my calendar, so I'll double check it and send you other messages. This afternoon, it confirmed, I could have put it in mine wrong, too, so. Because I think we normally have them set, so now that you mention it, I'll confirm them. So...
Yeah, I've got, my phone is fixed.
Okay.
Yeah. But you might check anyway. I mean, I might put it in wrong, too.
Martin was able to get up Monday to Nebraska. He and Andy went and looked at a truck that they had been notified about, and they spent actually two or three hours looking at the trucks, going to pick through it top to bottom. And it was a good truck, so they went ahead and confirmed the sale and actually drove it home. So, we were able to purchase that truck that we've been looking for. That's one that we had lost out on, what, two, three times?
Two, three times.
But we got there, and, you know, the trucks that we wanted were sold. So, it just got renovated. It's one that's pre-missions. It fits, it's the type, and I'm a mechanic, so excuse me, but it's a type that our mechanics can work on, and our software, and our cables, and all of our diagnostic equipment works with. So, it's something that we can service and should give us many years of service, so. But anyhow, I think we were able to get that picked up, so they're in good shape. And I mentioned to you in the work session, I contacted Jane Foltz. Jane was very willing to represent Dickinson County as our board member on the Flint Hills Regional Transit Administration Board. And so, their first meeting, I believe, is in May, and I've got a letter here that when you get to that item, while you can sign it, we'll send it to Sondra Clark, who's the administrator. Today, you've got a resolution that actually authorizes the issuance of the bonds for the buyout of the Public Building Commission's debt that we started on some time ago. The bond council was here Tuesday and met with you, and I gave us all the documents that you have signed and the resolutions. And one of the requirements that we need to do next week is to have a very brief PBC meeting during your commission meeting and for purposes of signing a resolution that we'll call the bonds. And essentially, that's the PBC's way of telling the county commissioner, the county, that we want you to pay or pay us our debt. So, I did send a message out to the other board members, and I've got a confirmation from Kimmy Phillips and Kyle McCook that they can both attend, so that'll be enough to have a quorum. And I know James responded back, and like Dustin said earlier, he will be in Virginia. I didn't figure there was any use in having him call in or bother the others, since we'll have a quorum for a one or two-minute meeting, so we'll hold that at 11:15 next week during your annual meeting. So, in your package, you have the year-to-date budget reports, staffing reports from Diane are pretty simple. We've only had the two EMS personnel that have resigned. And I did get it to you last week, and John thought that he had those filled. I believe he does. But so far for the year, we get one spike there, which is, on the chart, looks big, but it's only two employees. So, things are looking good. On the other year-to-date budget reports, still pretty early in the year. The one thing that I would note there is on the second page is our, for some reason, our sales tax is down considerably for the month of January. And I don't know whether that's because it's right behind Christmas, or what attribute to that, but it's down considerably, which also, our special sales tax for Rutherford Bridge is down, too. We're still within the, for the first three months, you know, we're still within good shape as far as meeting the target of a million dollars for the year. And hopefully, we'll see those sales revenues go back up, but they're down somewhat, so I don't know. You know, I'm not being a economist. I don't know what to attribute that to, but it's, the facts are the facts. So, if you have any questions on those, I'd sure try to answer them, but there's nothing alarming. There's a couple accounts that are in the red, but that's simply because we haven't gotten transfers over or money from the state as of now, which is not unusual for this time of year, so.
Are there any questions on, on any of that?
No. Thank you. Hold on. Thank you.
Doug, did you have anything for us today?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Back to the deal on KCCA registration, is that?
Yeah, we've got those made. I put that on there, and I went out and I told Tara, I said, hey, make sure you get us reservations after the meeting yesterday, kind of jogged my memory. And she said, you had me do that a month and a half.
Yeah, I got an email from her a month and a half ago, and I thought, well...
So, I didn't reprint my notes, but, and I said, well, okay, I'm more efficient than I thought it was, so.
Does that mean, meaning out at noon on Thursday then?
I think it is. I think it starts...
Is that the way it normally is?
Yeah, yeah. Because I normally do that to get people to drive home.
I don't know if they provide lunch at noon, or whether they do provide lunch.
I don't remember when they do. I don't believe they do.
Yeah.
So, I think we can get online and look at the agenda if they've got it out yet. But one thing we learned yesterday from handle, obviously, is the tax law will be the first big item, and it's going to be very beneficial.
Yeah, hopefully, they will...
Get us some room that we're going.
Hopefully, the legislature will have something passed, so we know where we stand on it. I think that'd be a good session that one morning that we're going to talk about.
Good, bad, or indifferent, so.
Yeah.
Does it say on there, Craig?
No, it doesn't say.
I'll look on our website.
Yeah, it just says 3 to 5.
I'll go on to notices and communications. This is a letter I'll just pass on to you, Brad. It's from EPM. They are manufacturers of computerized temperature control, so if you have any interest in that. Also, the fund expenditures for the commission, and we've looked over that. Did receive a letter from Dr. John Moser, and I'll just go ahead and read it. I think it's important. Dixon County Commissioners, this is a notice of resignation as deputy district coroner, and like I say, this is from Dr. John Moser from Harrington. Dear Dixon County Commissioners, I was appointed to, appointed deputy district coroner for the 8th judicial district on January 8, 2007, and I have worked hard to serve my local community to the best of my ability. I've had the honor to work alongside of our finest in law enforcement, including the local police department, sheriff's department, and the Kansas Highway Patrol. After over nine years of service, I have decided it is time to resign. I will remain as custodian of my notes and records in a locked facility in the event that, in that they may be helpful for any reopened cases. I feel honored to have had this opportunity to serve my community and the surrounding areas sincerely, Dr. John Moser. So, we will have to, I assume, replace John with another person, or?
Well, it'll kind of be up to Dr. Shern, you know. That Dr. Moser covered the south end of the county pretty well, so we'll make sure that Dr. Shern's aware of that, I'm sure he is, but, and see if somebody else that he would like to have appointed, so, or Dr. Jenkins, whichever one. Right now, for the time being, we have the physicians from this part of the county. We'll just have to cover the hand, and I know Russ got a copy of the letter dispatched, because there are ones that normally dispatch them, so.
I see. Okay. And then, also clerk of the district court gave their report for last month. And then, a magazine, I don't know whether you received this one, if you're interested in this, like I said, it's a magazine on products that are for sale, so.
I'm going to answer your question. The agenda is online, and it gets over within 11 o'clock on Thursday.
Oh, it's over at 11?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, I had something that afternoon, so that'll work great for me. Okay, the two added additions to our agenda, the first one was to consider appointing Jane Foltz as the Dixon County Representative to the Flint Hills Regional Transit Board.
So, move? Second.
Okay, been moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The other added was to review and consider a resolution authorizing the sale of bonds for the EMS debt. And do you want to maybe have a little discussion on what we're doing there?
Yes. Several months ago, we determined that it would be in our best interest to, for the county to buy out the bonds at the Public Building Commission, for the EMS facility in anticipation, or I guess out of concern that possibly that would not be an exempted item with the tax law, the PBC debt would not. So, we contacted our bond council, Robert Perry, and at his recommendation, we prepared those documents, you passed a resolution, I believe, in February with intent to do that. I met with the Public Building Commission. They expressed that intent, and now we're going through the resolution today that actually takes that action and all the signatures and paperwork that go along with that. So, this is actually purchasing the bonds, or selling the bonds for $840,000 worth of debt, which is the remaining debt on EMS facility, so.
You might also mention that by refinancing, or refinancing in the lower...
Yeah, that's a good point. By refinancing it now, we are saving about $70,000 to $80,000 over the life of the debt, so interest rates are slightly lower at this point, so that's the good news. It's been a little bit of work to do it, but the good news is that it is cost-saving, so. And these are, the debt will be paid off in 2029, so.
This would be resolution 040716.
I'd move that we adopt resolution 040716.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
We might highlight again the why, you know, the reason, you know, due to the property tax lids we may be under, and this is one of the ones that wasn't, we didn't know if it was going to be exempted or not.
Yeah, when the legislature came into session, of course, the doc ticked by 9, it was the property tax lid.
Because we hadn't thought about doing it until that became one of the...
Yeah, and one of our fears was, originally, Public Building Commission debt was not included as an exemption under that lid. And what that would mean is that we would not be able to levy the taxes to pay for our debt to the Public Building Commission, which would put us in a pretty bad situation since we owe, you know, $840,000. So, we, at the advice of our legal counsel, we chose to go ahead and transfer those bonds over, buy them, and transfer them over to the county or under the Public Building Commission, which the law authorizes you to do, so. We're not spending, and this is not any money that we're spending, we didn't already have. It wasn't spent in 2008 when we built the EMS facility. We're just transferring the debt from the Public Building Commission, which is also the county commission, over to the county commission. And at the same time, by refinancing, the interest rates are a little lower, saving some money, so. Now, we have also censored that by today's version of that bill, was before the legislature broke out, that PBC debt would be allowed. But we don't know until the gamble strikes and they adjourn, for sure what will be. So, we're erring on the side of caution here, so.
Yeah.
We don't want to get stuck in a situation where we've got debt that we can't levy taxes for, so.
Well, and like I say, with the lower interest rates, it's a benefit to us anybody to be doing it, so. So, all in favor, I guess we had a motion in second. Any discussion? So, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, we've got a couple places to sign on this.
Yeah, that's the second one.
Yeah, there's two resolutions.
Okay, then we have another resolution here.
One's an own rule resolution, and the other's a resolution... One's a home rule resolution, and the other's a resolution to sell the bonds, so. I believe the home rule resolution, what we're reviewing, because I'm staying with Spelman, incorrect, and it's, and it's simple to do, and then Bob Perry felt like the technical accountability was important, and it gets filed with the state, he wanted to have it correct, so.
This one's, we got the A out, so this one is in the motion. There's just one, one place for you.
Okay. This one is a home rule resolution, and that's just something that we felt like we needed to pass, that goes along with the other resolution.
Yeah, technically, critically, if I'm wrong, Doug, that there's no, as I understand, there's no law that says you can do this, and there's no law that says you can't, so by, by that being the situation, you are actually legislating your own authority to do, to take this action. And so, you created a home rule that says you can have the authority to do this.
Okay.
And we did this originally, however, I think the name was spelled wrong in the first one, so that's why we're redone.
Okay. Okay, this is Resolution oh-four, oh-seven, sixteen A, and I move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there anything else?
That's it.
I'd move we adjourn.
Seconding.
It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.